Okay, it's five o'clock on Monday, December 5, and we will call the City Council Meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here. If everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Deb.
Harley.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Don.
Jody.
Here.
Agenda item number four, entertain a motion to approve today's agenda. So moved. Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Today, I'd like to welcome Caitlin Hagar, videographer, and I'll hold this up here. Caitlin's gonna zoom in on that. The City of Algona and Public Works Department received an award from the Asphalt Paving Association of Iowa last Thursday down in Des Moines, and this is in recognition of communities under the population of 10,000. And Barb Smith, Kurt Nielsen, and I, along with Bolton and Mank, our contractors, traveled down to Des Moines to receive that award. So.
Very nice.
And then just a reminder about the movie Silent Night in Algona premieres this weekend at State 5 Theater. And it's only gonna be in Algona for five days, so I would suggest buying tickets in advance. You can get them online or at the theater. It's a meaningful story, and you may see some local familiar faces in the movie as well. So council, have anything they'd like to share? Okay, hearing done, we'll move to agenda item number six. Barb, do you have anything with the city administrator?
Sure. Lori sent me those pictures of the library. She said everything's going well. They're getting the sheathing up for the new wind block or entrance there. She said framing and sheathing is going on. Materials are coming in as expected. Her main concern right now, especially today after the freezing rain, is it was pretty slick out there and patrons getting in and out of the library while the construction's going on. Dan with Parks and Rec did go get some straight sand to put down on our sidewalks, so we're not putting salt on the new concrete to ruin that. Also, the big news today is Phillips Street is 100% open. Sidewalks are done, driveway approaches are done, pet ramps are done, no more temporary closures. The only thing left to do will be the seating, and that will be done next break. That's all I've got, Rick.
Okay, very good, thank you. This is the agenda item number seven. This is the citizens' opportunity to address the council with any item not on the agenda. And I don't see anyone here in the council chambers. Agenda item number eight is the consent agenda, which includes approving the minutes from our November 21 work session and regular city council meeting, approving the minutes from our November 28 special session that we had last Monday evening, and then approve the bills to be paid this cycle.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Tyler. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number nine pertains to the stop sign ordinance for Phillips Street.
Last week, it was brought to our attention that when they installed the signs on Phillips Street, they kinda got them confused. Oak Street has always been a stop sign for eastbound traffic and westbound traffic, but we noticed in our ordinance, it didn't state westbound traffic needed to stop. So this will correct that issue. Also, from recommendation of the engineer, he said Lucas Street really should have stop signs being right there by Seton instead of yield signs. So this will change our ordinance, take the yield signs off at Lucas and Phillips intersection and make them stop signs.
So this is just the first reading? Or do we have to do readings of this?
Yeah, this is just the first reading.
This will be the first reading, yeah. Make a motion, we waive the first reading?
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Jody to waive the first reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing done, vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion to approve the first reading.
I'll second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Jody to approve the first reading, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 10 concerns the training agreement for the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy.
Bo, do you wanna talk about this? Or do you want me to?
Don't matter, you can talk. I can come up with options.
With the, when the city sends a new police officer down to the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, we have to pay for their training, their lodging, their meals. Or not the lodging that's included, but their meals, and we pay them by the hour and such. Normally, they sign a contract when they go down there that they reimburse the city for the cost of the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. With the turnover in police officers that all communities are having anymore, Jacob felt it was really important to recoup all of our costs as far as mileage, payroll over what we're paying them over the amount of minimum wage, the meals that we're paying them plus the cost of the academy. The expected estimated training costs are $32,019 to send one officer to the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. So this resolution will approve the agreement that's also attached, so the city can recoup more of their funds. Do you have anything to add, Bo?
Yeah, this is very common across. We had, our last one's pretty weak. We kinda upgraded to make sure we were in time with everyone else, and this is very common of stretching out a four-year, each year 25% coming off. That's very common in this industry of what happens in going to the academy over a four-year stretch. If there's any questions about it, and the one thing about on the very top of Exhibit A, it does say estimates, or you know, it can be, you know, some things can change, you know. One of the latest ones, like the food, that went up $600 over the last two years. You know, that's changed, so the next one could be a little higher just due to what food costs, what tuition changes, stuff like that.
Yeah, you'll just adapt that page and then still be the 25, 25, 25.
Absolutely. Everything else before that is always the same.
Same.
Yep.
For each person. No, I think this is something we talked about. We wanted to get done and have it so that they would, we'd have consistency with that. So I'd make a motion, we approve the training expense agreement.
I'll second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Jody. Any discussion? Hearing done, vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, thank you, Bo.
Thanks, Bo.
Agenda item number 11 concerns an amendment to the AMU budget. And John Bilstein is here to visit with us.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And members of the city council, John Bilstein, General Manager, over at the Utilities. As you know, each year, the board of AMU approves a budget. The city council then accepts the budget. This budget was approved by the AMU board at their meeting on December 28. There are two things that we're asking for action on. One is the amendment to the 2022 budget. And that budget, you do in your packets have the overall detail, bottom budget amendment budget. But that budget had two items that increased from what we had estimated way back in October of '21. The first of those was an increase in expenses. Our expenses increased by a little over $3.7 million overall for all three utilities, water, electric, and communications. The budget originally in 2022 included expenses of $20,629,000. So that is a new number first for the expenses. Why did the expenses increase from what we had originally planned? Most of that was driven by power supply costs, which is the largest item in our budget. And secondly, we had more work and maintenance on water mains this year. Some of that was related to our joint projects we're working together on. Others were just water main breaks, new service replacements that happened that would be on what we had anticipated. In addition, we had increase in revenue, which is good news. So we have budgeted revenues of just over $21 million. That amount actually, we anticipate by the end of the year, will be about $3.2 million higher in terms of revenue. So increase in expenses and also increase in revenues for the 2022 budget. So those are the items from the budget amendment piece. And I'll go on and just talk a little bit about the 2022, 2023 budget. So the 2022 budget, 2023 budget, I'm sorry, is basically flat in terms of revenues and expenses for all three utilities combined. It's our goal to obviously try to keep our revenues as low as we can and still accomplish our goals for continued improvement in our all-three utilities. And really, that commitment, of course, assumes capital improvements. So having said that, 2023 budget for all three utilities is total revenues of $24,419,000, which is slightly above the 2022 amendment budget that we have. The expenses are $24,019,000. This year, we're at $24,358 to our expenses. So that should result in total revenues, excess revenues of about $400,000. Pretty close to what we think it's gonna be. This year, we anticipate those total excess revenues being about $29,000. So a $24.4 million budget, we'd be that close where we have already happened in terms of excess revenues. So big capital items that we're gonna be talking about this year, 2023, or next year, 2023, will include a continued commitment to move overhead to underground electric utilities. So we've been working on an area of Arlington Street that we have down from, down to about the Meyer area. And we have a lot of exposure from trees. Just makes good sense to get that underground and get an age of the overhead system there. Just to have a healthy liability and resiliency, which is one of our goals. Another item, which I'll jump to the next one, would be an area on Oak Street. And this could be a combined project, really a combined project with fiber optics and communications, which is also part of our electric overall resiliency. Or we can also get ready to vary the overall overhead electric system from thin drive to powerful. So that is another phase of that project in '23. And then finally, we'll be finishing up the work at Grand State Hotel in '23. And of course, just like the things happen in the city, there could be new development, other things that happen, which isn't always great, but it means we'll pivot some and other things that could create some changes. In terms of the water utility, we have three projects, again, those are partnership projects that we're looking on with the utility. It's always harder than you have to run the project when somebody talks fast.
I'm trying to find the water here.
So you gotta get through all the details, Barb. In the water utility, if you go down a few more slides, you will see some of the major projects, which of course are projects you're familiar with. One would be Rooster Street project. Another one, a major one, as far as the water main from the airport area. So you can see the area, the end of that yellow line is right there. The wastewater plant sat through the personal water camp. That's where our water comes across and goes into the airport property. We wanna get, obviously, we need to get out of the way of the airport by night, so that's the first part of that. We also wanna get our water infrastructure just out of the airport where the grass runway area is, so we do not create any issues there. We have a water main break. So we will come around, go around the city compost area, the DOT, and come back and follow the north side of the highway back and tie into the water main that's being extended now for the Grand State Hotel. All of that provides another river crossing for us and another really important loop, which provides a redundancy and increases fire flows for that area and all the way down Highway 18. So a nice improvement there. So that's a major project. Most likely over $1 million. We'll be using state of law development funds for that project, and then we'll continue things with ship or still in regards to the half of the personal water. So that's a major project. The next one is the Rooster Street project in combination with the reconstruction in the city. We'll be putting water in. And then finally, we have a one-block area from Rowan Street on Elm to, I'm sorry, from Baguio to Baguio. So there's one block that we have had multiple lottery breaks that may just be a scary place. That scenario, we'll do that. We'll be working with city staff, because that's also a middle-of-the-way project planned for next year. So we will be creating some of the issues there with that street. So we'll be pretty much sure of some of that asphalt and current government issues. So those are the big things. Communications, really not as much because a lot of the communications, distribution system improvements are in the electric utility. So there will just be purchasing and replacement of customer demand. Those are the big ones. So with that, as I indicated, the overall utility budget is $24.4 million in terms of revenues, and about $24,000 just to share with the other expenses. Any questions about that? And we have hinted put in there also the size that we have just, our continued work is we're looking at additional generation resources, which may be a discussion about more generation resources here in Algona, which could be solar. There's also maybe relief, there's more like a diesel natural gas, fire generation, the ability importance of that. And we hit home getting a polar vortex a few years ago. In addition to that, with the solar that we have today, that is not in Algona. We know that the markets and the ability to run over renewable energy does also rely on fossil fuel. So a lot of power plants, like the O4 plant, our plant in Council Plus, run based on wind and not wind. So we kinda follow those markets. The same thing is true with fossil regenerative. A lot of times, it's based on what the wind is doing, on what the solar energy is doing. Wind power is the big one today. We see more solar, and we're seeing it's really the larger source. So we continue to look at diversified sources of all of those. And just to note that with the wind farm that we have purchased power agreements with in South Dakota and our local wind farm southeast of Algonquin, we're nearly 45% of our energy in Algona this year. It's a major jump by nearly 40% in the last year and a half. So it's been a really good project. We hope for all of our consumer owners, and it's been financially very good, which then means that has an impact back with the hopes that we do not need to adjust electric rates or not adjust it as much.
That's overall is 45%?
45%.
Because, I mean, there's days when the wind doesn't blow and you're getting zero there, so.
Yeah, so we.
Actually, pretty good.
Yeah, it really is, yeah. So when we look at what our total kilowatt hours consumed is in a calendar year, we're gonna be at about 43% to 45% just from the overall.
Very good.
It's been a good thing for us. And I think some of you will side with us that you may know that we do have our electric vehicle chargers are in operation now in the parking lot. We've had a few people charging. We had kind of a soft start. We haven't told a lot of people yet. Should be out by now. There's a new signage, things that will come here soon. And we just got the credit card. But it's also after, which most people use an app. Could use a credit card as well.
Just curious, so with watching inflation affecting so many other things, how's it affecting electricity?
So in terms of electricity prices, the markets will change really based on fuel prices, so it's gone up and down. We have not seen, so in terms of fossil fuel market, coal itself has not increased, but the cost of new, from the power grid base in Wyoming to the source, the O4 plant or our plants in Council Plus has increased substantially. So that's been the issue. We're very thankful it would not be rail strike, because that would have been a big issue for us because we need to have coal moving to the plants. And then on fuel prices, we've seen that go up. However, we just bought fuel last week, and that is a dollar less than what the 2019 says is what we made for it. This is absolutely no fuel tax on that because it's too specifically for generation. And that was delivered at 319. We paid over $4 a month a pound. So that price has gone back down. We try to time it, but we can't. Doesn't always work because we need to have supply because when we need to run, we need to run. And when we're running full plant, we're burning about 1,200 gallons an hour. Takes a lot of fuel to generate, so it's good that that price is just going back down a little bit. So we haven't seen a big issue there. But what we have seen is supply chain issues, like all of you have seen. For instance, we are trying to order some of our material switchgear. Right now, switchgear is important in the electric distribution side of our operations, and their time is now 40 weeks. A piece of switchgear, and they came to us first. So it's one of those things that's really fresh here. Now, we've also had things where it's been a very long lead time and they're to ride much sooner than we expected. So planning, and that's why budgeting for all of us is difficult because when you need material, you may plan and order it much earlier than you anticipated hoping it doesn't come too much earlier. I'm hoping that, because that's what we needed. That's a big deal for us to be able to continue construction and do things without, just continue to make our system more resilient.
John, I was gonna ask you the price difference per kilowatt hour for coal versus wind? Is there a price difference for you guys that you pass on that?
Yeah, actually, the way that we, the price, we locked in price of our wind, so we have that price set for the next 10 years. And that is about where the price of our coal is. It's a really good price. And actually, what's interesting about that is the way that we buy and sell energy is where we own the resources. We sell all of it every day into the market. We put it in, and then every day, we buy back what we need, and then we get credits for what we own. So which would have to make it very complicated. The good news is there are times that we are selling our wind at a higher price than what we buy it for. So net out, last month, we actually made money. Which wasn't our goal, but that's a good thing. So again, that reduces our pressure on rates. So it's been a very good thing for us. When we do, and all of you see this that if you're electric consumers of ours, is we have a power cost adjustment. Power cost adjustment is set up to try to recover those fluctuations in costs. So several months, we will have credits, and then we will occasionally see where we get a charge after. So that really is the way that we try to cover those costs. We try to anticipate where we think it's gonna be in our base rate, but then many times, that fluctuates a lot. So much because of inflation, because of market prices, things like that. Overall, right now, our wind is coming in at a really high price, where we buy it. And we have real large in credits as well. We're selling those, so that helps. So maybe we may not where we are today helps overall as well.
So what is the charge per kilowatt hour right now? I don't even know, I couldn't look at my bill. For just what, Algona page?
Essentially, you're at, we're at $12 and a half cents a kilowatt hour. Obviously, our production costs, we purchase it for less than that. We have transmission costs, the cost of getting to your house, and those things that do this to that higher. The good news is we haven't had to adjust electric rates in a number of years. We'd like to keep that going. If we could, the prices are good. It's a common. Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you, John. Entertain a motion then to accept this amendment to the budget?
I'll say no.
Second.
I have a motion from Jody, second from Tyler. Any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. And then agenda item number 12 is a resolution to accept the 2023 AMU budget.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2023 AMU budget.
Second.
I have a motion from Jody, second from Brad to accept the AMU budget for next year. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number 13, this is to approve a pay application for the library renovation project.
This is payout number 17 for Hankel Construction for the library renovation project. The current amount due on this payout is $205,795.82. Total project cost to date are $1,898,212.70, leaving a balance to finish the project, including retainage, of $298,705.29. So we're getting close.
Move to prayer. Second. We have a motion from Harley, second from Rodney to approve this pay application. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number 14, this is a pay request regarding the address of 209 East Kennedy.
This is one of the CDBG owner-occupied housing grants that we received. This is payout number two, and there will probably be three on the home. The current contract sum is $27,970. Of that, they have completed $14,897 worth of work. We have, and then minus retainage, of course, the previous payout was $10,260, leaving this payout due at $3,148. It's kind of a small payout, but NiOCOG's required to do a draw on our grant every six months. If they don't do it within the six months, they close the grant, so we had to get a payout, or a grant with a grant draw done.
I move to approve payout. I have a motion from Tyler, second from Jody, to approve this pay application, any question? Vote please Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 15, this is an application for a tax exemption.
Yeah, this is a tax abatement application for CLH Holdings, it's for the storage units that are being constructed over on Norwood Drive. They have to have that in, what, by the end of the year, don't they?
It's like February.
Oh, by February, so they filled the form out.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Rodney, second from Jody, to approve this tax exemption, any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, and thank you for your investment in Algonah. Agenda item number 16 is an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Yeah, I do have one, I visited with Molly Leiting, which is her current teacher, leadership coordinator at Algona Elementary, and she's agreed to be a part of the Parks and Recreation Commission filling Zou Dao's spot, and so I recommend her for approval, and thank her.
I'll make a motion to approve Molly Leiting for the Parks and Recreation.
Second.
We have a motion from Jody, second from Brad, to approve Molly, or Molly, I'm sorry, any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, and thank you Molly, we look forward to working with you. Agenda item number 17, this is an appointment to the Cemetery Board Trustees to fill Jenny Weaver's position. Any names surface or?
Was looking for that too, but they don't have a surface on the name on that one for anybody.
All right. We'll move that to the next meeting then. And then agenda items number 18, 19, 20, and 21, I probably can just summarize, these are, these are all second notifications of terms expiring, the Broadband Telecommunications Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, Housing Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. And again, those are all second notifications of those, so hopefully those appointments we'll be able to fill next council meeting. So with that, before we adjourn, I would just wanna thank Bo, our Chief of Police, for being our Sergeant of Arms here at the city council meetings.
Yes.
So it is 5:30, and we're at the end of our published agenda, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, the meeting is adjourned.
Holy cow.
Thank you.